Okay, good. Good evening, everybody. There's not too many knocks. Welcome to the Monday, June 3rd, 2024 edition of the community of the whole community development. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd also like to welcome Brody, can't say your last name wrong for murder.
Fire.
There you go. Yeah, that is exactly what said.
Yeah.
Who's joined our committee for the first time today. So so welcome to you as well. And we have some members in the audience as well. So welcome to you guys as well. And I see that we have Trevor from from Atlanta on the line here as well. So welcome, Trevor.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. So I need to first of all, talk about the agenda quickly. Right now, we have a delegation for an affordable housing partnership, but right now they're not in 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 presence in the building. So we may get to that point and have to move that one out a little bit just further down the agenda for when they do arrive. So just putting that out there. Is there any potential changes required on the agenda that anybody has? Oh, all right. Good. Okay, then I need a mover for the agenda. So move. Yes, would you like a second?
Absolutely. We'd love to.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. So moving on to number three, disclosure of pecuniary interests.
Call called question.
Sorry. Yes, let's call that a question. Thank you very much. Okay, all in favor? Perfect. Now, number three, disclosure of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest or the general nature thereof. Does anybody have any to declare?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to number four, then, business arriving arising from previous committee meeting minutes, if any, does anybody have anything, Mr. Councilor Dell?
Through the chair, the C A O. Did we get the full report back on the canal stability report? Through the chair, Counselor Martell. I'm not sure if we've received that report just yet. I'll I'll pass to the Deputy C A O on that one.
Thank you. Through the through the chair, I am hopeful that we'll have something on next Monday.
Thank you. All right. Anybody have anything else? All right, good. Moving on to five, then, is the delegation for affordable housing partnerships. So right now, Mr. Thompson is not in presence. So we're going to move on then to to number six, action information and discussion items. So six A. Number one is the site plan control agreement for unit two over eight Queen Street in Johnstown self-storage. C D C.
Thank you through through the chair. So this I can just review a site line control agreement for an expansion to development at two eighteen street. The new owners of Johnstown self-storage have made an application for site control with site alterations proposed to accommodate larger buildings for this self-storage facility. The existing agreement for this site from two thousand and four, it's been amended recently, and we would repeal it with the new site plan control agreement. So the the farm is located in the Johnstown suburbs area. The surrounding lands are mixed of residential and commercial uses. There's a water force and some provincially significant wetlands west of the site. The site's been under site control since two thousand and four, as I mentioned. It was amended twenty twenty one after the hotline adjustment, which transferred a portion of the land and entranceway and county road tubes to the Jack station there. And then more recently, the township to convey the adjacent road allowance on the west side of the site to the owners as an addition there. So the new owners are planning an expansion. The site plan proposes three larger additional storage buildings plus a storage building that would be made from shipping containers. So shipping their account with the building materials that make up that one of the stored buildings. It's all on the same foundation. There'll be some additional parking, and it involves a continued use of the north parcel for R V storage as part of phase two of development. The owners work with colored engineering to prepare a stormwater management plan. Stormwater directed to the Johnstown Creek and the provincial significant wetland via an existing ditch on the adjacent property to the west. So the plan proposes improvements to the unopened road allowance and culverts at Queen Street and on the neighbor's property. A letter from the owner of the neighboring property, which acknowledges and agrees this work taking place, has been provided. The township's unopened road allowance between the two parcels. It'll be used to access the north parcel for phase two development and then upgrades to the road allowance to make it safe for access and versions vehicles are proposed by colored engineering. And this is similar to the upgrades that were required in the initial site plan control agreement that was done in two thousand and four. This updated. And more recently looked at by color. So the applicants then advised that they'll be required to enter into a non-maintenance agreement with regard to the use of this unmaintained road allowance prior to any works being completed for phase two. Their intention isn't to do phase two right away. It would be sometime down the road. So before they go that, they'll come back to council and we could work at a non-maintenance agreement. Also want to mention there there is a road use agreement on file for the neighboring property already. You'd like to give them permission to use that road allowance for the neighboring property nine years ago. And so policy implications on May twenty seventh, the committee adjustments per the minor variance to reduce the thirteen meter setback from the western property boundary to two meters. This allows wider access routes on the site, and we appeal period for this decision would end on June seventeenth. So normally I bring a site plan control agreement to committee after the C A O has approved it with the condition that the applicant enter into an agreement with the township. In this case, the appeal period for the minor variance hasn't ended. So technically, the site plan hasn't been approved yet, but in committee would like to approve this agreement on or make a recommendation to go ahead with this agreement. Once the appeal period has ended, then the appeal period will be done by the time it goes to council at the end of the month. I have an agreement with council.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
So, thank you, Chair. Two hundred and ninety-five pages of of the green page reports. But reading through South Nation doesn't seem to have much of an issue with it. It might seem to be the only.
Through the chair. So South Nation did review the stormwater management report, and there there was a little bit of discord between color and South Nation, and they reconciled any of the concerns. Then we noticed that the the setback on the western boundary wasn't going to comply with the setbacks. So we have them to the minor variance. We got a letter from color that says it is looking to impact stormwater management. But I I do want to be clear, South Nation haven't reviewed the stormwater management plan with that reduced setback there. However, we have that letter from color that says it won't impact it. And in order to do any work that close to the water force, they will require a permit from South Nation. So South Nation will have a chance to review it.
They'll still have a chance to review it.
Yeah.
That was really good.
Yeah, thank you, Billy Chair. So you're saying that recommendation is that after the minor variance was processed, so has it been done? My rare has been.
There's a decision that the appeal period has.
So now, so really, the recommendation isn't right there because we haven't got the appeal period is what, June seventeen?
Correct. So the recommendation is that committee recommend that council enter into a site plan control agreement with John's Johnstown self-storage incorporated as attached following the successful completion of the minor variance process for A oh one twenty-four and approval of the site plan. So when the appeal period has ended, the C A O would be able to approve the site plan, and then it council could.
Then we'll come back to council, I was gonna say.
Yes.
So after June seventeen, okay, that's it.
Keep some movement.
Yeah.
Very, thanks. Councilor Dell.
No issues at all. Love to hear the word expansion.
I just have a couple of inquiry questions through the chair to Wendy. Is this all going to be one unit again? Like, is it all going to be fenced in together? Or is it going to be two different units?
Through the chair, it won't be fenced in together. Each parcel, I guess, will be fenced separately because they would use that road allowance to access it, and that road allowance is used by the adjacent property owner. Also, so they're going to make some improvements to it, and they're going to make it safe enough so that a buyer could drive on it and and reach the the parcels. But some of those improvements are planned for a few years.
Thank you.
That's just process?
Yeah.
Perfect, years off. Perfect. Okay, good. And, you know, I just had a little bit of question about the water, which the mayor has answered, asked perfectly as well, of my concern. So I have nothing else. So okay, so with that, we have a recommendation that committee recommend that council enter into a site plan control agreement with Johnstown Self-Storage Inc. as attached, following the successful completion of the minor variance process for A zero one twenty-four and approval of the site plan. So do I have a mover for that? Move by Councilor Martell, seconded by the mayor. Perfect, okay. All of you. Right, okay, excellent. Okay, so I think I saw Rob Thompson is here now. So we skipped over yours. We can get back to it now for for your delegation. Things move fast sometimes. So yeah, perfect, absolutely.
I'm really sorry. I'm late. I woke up at one King Street West this morning in downtown Toronto, went to Pito Girl for a meeting, went to Renfrew, and now I'm here. So.
You're tired.
Well, I haven't been home since right. So anyway. Okay, so you I presume you've seen what Wendy had set out. So I really just wanted to come to this meeting to kind of get a feeling on what the where you might partner with us. So we want to do an affordable housing type of venture. The Eric Baker, a long time family here, he's got his property. We all know, I go after the back, we all know what we're talking about already. Okay. So so property been in family forever. We've done some numbers, and we think that we can build small units. So towns in here. And before I start, I want to tell you this is seventy-five-ish units. This is our Mac. We just want, we're not going to build seventy-five units. I asked the the I asked the engineers to just give me the maximums, what fits in kind of the configuration we're talking. Obviously, you know, a fourteen unit townhouse is it's not practical. So we'll probably bust it in the middle here and here, and there'll be there'll be some changes. This is not the this is a high level. These are three-story town or three-story apartments. So they would be twelve and twelve, and then we've got these. So we'll probably end up around seventy, I think. So I've done some numbers. Eric's not, he's essentially donating the land to this project. The we had the engineers also do a cost calculation, again, high level, but our dilemma is there's no sewer there. And but the sewer runs right by. So we need a pump station. We also need a water plant, and then all the infrastructure comes to about with with we had E V B engineering do it, and they're pretty, they're, you know, they're they're putting these installs in or doing the engineering on them for various municipalities on an ongoing basis. So their numbers should be pretty close. They put in a contingency and came to six point six million. So if we just do the math on six point six million, six point six divided by, let's say, we're going to do seventy. That's ninety-four thousand a unit with no lot cost. So we certainly can't do affordable housing with a ninety-four thousand dollar lot cost. Particularly if, you know, e- even if you said here in the the apartment buildings, that really doesn't work. It should be more like thirty or forty thousand. So I Eric would like to see the town partner with him on this. And what we would be asking for is that you pay for the pump station. The I know that's not a normal thing, but this also isn't a normal development. The the townhouses are going to be about eight hundred to eight hundred and sixty square feet, something like that. So because they're going to be fairly economical to build, and we want to have a variation. So what I might do is, in the design, so if we had a block of six and a block of seven, say, in a row, we might do two end units as bungalows, the eight hundred square feet, and then maybe do a half-story or maybe a whole story on two or three of them in the middle. So I don't know if any of you have you seen in Brockville, there's one called Butler's Creek. It's sort of in the Brock West sort of area, Brock and Cedar-ish area. Anyway, Rick Walker, the car dealer, Toyota guy, he did those several years ago, and they're kind of like that, two bungalows, two two, two stories. So then we can be a little more, maybe not everything to all people, but we want to have a variety of housing. So from small, eight hundred plus square feet, maybe we can get up to some twelve or fifteen hundreds with the two stories. And then I don't know how big these are going to be, these, but they'll be eight hundred to a thousand, I think, the the apartments. I don't have any style in mind at this point. We're gonna this really is just about are you interested in partnering? Eric's pretty frustrated with the process, not you, but just the process that it takes to go through this, you know, just to do anything in Ontario. I know we're trying to cut through red tape, but frankly, the the province isn't doing that good a job. I know I know they're trying, but they're not there yet. So it's been very difficult. It's a difficult site. When I took this project on almost two years ago, I thought we'd be done by now, and we're just at this point. And this is probably the most difficult site I've ever tried to do. There's a lot of a lot of constraints, not the least of which is lack of sewer. So we have done best wells. There's lots of good quality water. So we have enough water to do this. The I was going to tell you about it. I think that's about it. Question.
Mr. Mayor, you want to say it, or you want to?
I'll let everybody else go.
Yes, you're saying that lot costs rob at ninety-four grand at six million, and it should be around forty.
Yeah, sorry. I said lot cost. There really is no lot cost. Eric.
Eric's got Eric's own name plans. Okay, so it's the service, so not a lot cost, service cost, right?
For lot.
For lot. So ninety-four to forty, is that the forty if we go on this?
No, we're still high. So so let's say it's, let's say it's six point six.
Yeah.
And take off twelve, one point two, we're at forty-four. Maybe we'll get lucky. We have a contingency in there. Maybe we'll get lucky at four million. I I always kick myself out when I do this, try and make the numbers work, and then in reality, anyway, we have seventy units. That's still fifty-seven.
Okay.
So it's still too much, but Eric's willing to, this is not about making a pile of money. He is going to sell it afterwards in in all likelihood. Though I'm not a hundred percent sure how we're going to do this either, because this will be something else that will come up. So in order to get this, we can't make it like a regular subdivision. So because as a municipality, for you to assume the roads, you need really large roads, you need them built to a certain standard. But if we make this a condo or a life lease, then we can have lanes, and as long as the snowplows and the and can get through and the fire trucks can get in, we're good. But we certainly don't have to build it to the same standard. So it's more of a private property. So we could do a complete condo, which I doubt. We'll these will almost undoubtedly be rentals, the apartment buildings. And in this area, I think the towns will either be a life lease or a land condo. And where they own, where they don't own the land, that's part of a whole collective, but they actually own the piece, the the construction. So like I said, and so depending on how that goes, we'll get we'll get it gone. And there's, again, Eric's not, you know, I mean, maybe there'll be a small profit, I don't know, but his his motivation is to do something good for the town, not to make money, hence donating the land to it. And and when I say donating the land to it, to the project, not to the town, he he he's, we're not carrying a lot cost. So when I do my numbers, I'll I'll look at the cost of the building, I'll look at the cost for the for the servicing, and whatever the government's going to want, and depending on what we build, and, you know, if it's a total rental project, then there won't be any H S T, so that'll be a benefit, whatever that is. That's what it's going to be.
Now, you said affordable.
Yeah. So.
Definition. Help me.
Well, I'm always I'm always looking to you guys for a definition, but let me tell you what I think we can do. So if it was eight hundred and fifty square feet, and I had sixty thousand roughly for a lot cost, I think we could bring those in maybe in the I'm wondering if we can make bring them in around three hundred, maybe three and a quarter or three fifty, something like that. They'll be the cheapest thing going for sure. And and I I I might even be able to get them down lower than that, but I I don't want to promise something before we've got to that point. What I do see is I see construction cost coming down. My my although I'm doing my best not to do construction anymore and to planning and development. My cement guy, my foundation guy, he tells me that he their prices are back to pre-COVID pricing, and I think a lot of those prices are starting to happen. Not so much in the country. But a lot of the city guys are starting to reduce their prices. So I think that's going to trickle up. This is still going to be, our best case scenario is, you know, maybe eighteen months from now, because we, I know you've already started the approval process for the water and sewer. But we are going to have to get something going with the water as well, or sort of for the sewer, but we are going to have to get something going with the water. And when you're dealing with M E C P, there's, you know, it it's a big hurry up and way through, unfortunately. Does that, does that suit you, dollar-wise?
Oh, yeah. No, 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 no.
I I don't, as as it relates to rents, I don't know, because I haven't done a costing on the bill on the big buildings. That's just, those are the townhouses, if we were to sell them. And 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 of course, if if we do it on a life lease, where so that so the snow and the mow is completely done, and their water service is all water and sewer charges all dialed in, it would be water, I suppose. This the sewer, you would likely charge, you would obviously charge for. So there'd be a fee for for that, a monthly fee for for those items. But because, again, there's no, there's no cost in there for the lot, that's how we can bring it in. So unfortunately, the federal government's now limiting the H S T to for rentals, so.
Uh, no, I'm good right now.
I have enough at this point. I need some more information, some content and stuff.
I have one question through the chair to Rob. The the life lease, is that, what does that mean? Like, what's that entail?
So it's like, it it's a mechanism as opposed, so we have fee symbol, which is however, everybody owns their houses. It's, you know, single-family home or 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 more you you own the dirt and you own the house, and you own the bundle of rights to go with it. In in a condo, you don't, you only own any inch into the walls, it passed the drywall. Everything else is common. With a life lease, it's a bit similar to similar to a land condo, but not quite. You don't own the land, but you own the improvements on the land. So you own the house, et cetera, on it. And you generally pay a rental fee. It's not landlord and tenant kind of rental. It's more of a can't think of the word, but that's the direct to occupy fee. So you might I built one a few years ago, not for me. I built it as a contractor. And you might know it. It's on the Parkway going into Gannon Oakway from Ivy League, and it's just before you get there, and I think it's called Fox Run. And they had a retirement home, and we built nine or twelve or fifteen, I can't remember. We built some townhouses along the river, and the concept was those were feeders. So so she owns the land, the people own the the townhouses themselves, and and they have a lease and the right, it it's not a one-year or two-year, it's a forever lease as long as they're as long as they're there, and they can transfer it and sell the rights on it.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you.
Yeah, you can sell stuff on.
They would pay taxes, hide your own eat, whatever.
Be responsible.
What's that?
I just mentioned be responsible for the roof side, like the main, that's the building.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, just like your normal house. Yeah. But instead of owning the dirt, they're going to rent the dirt that it sits on. And in that comes a bundle of all the things that you would normally get out of a condo.
Oh.
Like snow and mow and street lighting, I suppose.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. Just one quick question. You mentioned the donation of the land not to the township, to the project, right? And that would be to Rob Thompson Development?
No, 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 oh, no, no. No, when I, and I I guess I guess donations at that work. It's, so it's not my project, it's the baker's project. I'm just consulting for them, helping them through the process. And so I'll find a builder for them, I'll take it to approvals, I'll do the design, et cetera, et cetera. And probably rent them, et cetera, but it's not mine, it's theirs. So when I say he's going to donate to, I mean that he's not going to, when we do our cost analysis of what does this cost, and then we add some profit, there's no cost for the for the land at all. And if he if he adds any profit at all, it'll be tiny, and that's really for margins of error. He really just wants to, it's more of a philanthropic process here, especially with his granddaughters. They are very, 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 there's three, three three levels of family. Eric, who's, I think, turns ninety-one this year, and and then his two daughters, and then there's two, the two granddaughters. And the further you get down the line, the more the more they want affordable housing and to do something philanthropic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
I'm so happy to finally have you here. You know, it was like forever that, you know, we talked to you at North Grandwall Summit, I think.
Yeah.
Years and years ago, about about the potential of this. I know, you know, as the township, we've certainly done our part, right? We moved the province so that you could even be considered for this, right, with the provincial policy statement and and being able to get them to move specifically so that, you know, the potential of this one could happen, you know, and it was a big change and pushed by the previous group and and this group as well for for that change. So the reason that we pushed is because we we want to see development. We want to see that piece of land, you know, move move ahead. And so I've got about a thousand questions. So a lot of which will 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 I won't do. But a couple of main concerns. So and the deputy asked, what is affordable? You said you can sell an eight hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand. But what we didn't say is what's the percentage of the units out of the seventy? Is there going to be one that's three hundred thousand? Are they all going to be three hundred thousand?
Well, so as I said, so if we have them all as bungalows, the footprint that we designed in our maximum density here is about eight, eight fifty or eight sixty. So they could all be that. But I think that we need to be a little bit more things to more people. So as I was saying, so in a block of six, we might have two bungalows, which would be your eight sixty, and then we have two, two, two stories in the middle. So it doesn't cost as much to build that second story. So I don't know what those numbers would be, but it would seem to be below well above the market. So so they wouldn't all be saying three hundred thousand, but they might be three to high four. So I I'm picking a number at this point. It's it's hard for me to say.
Right. I think, you know, asking the council to be a partner certainly want to be a partner. I mean, I think we've shown our willingness, you know, by decide being considered, even considering it, and then certainly be pushing the province to make that change, the P P S C and connect to that sewer line. Otherwise, it's dead water, right? So but I think for us to consider, you know, paying for the pumping station, which, you know, it's unusual. For us to even consider that, we would, there'd have to be a percentage for affordable housing. Otherwise, we can't justify.
I think.
There'd have to be a guarantee. There'd have to be a guarantee, otherwise it would be impossible to. Yeah, but we'd have to see that in front of us, right, before we. You know, to say it is one thing, right, I mean, it would be highly unusual for us. To pay for a pumping station, I think, right, I mean.
I, I, I suppose. We're a chicken and egg, uh, 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 scenario there. Because if, if. If we can't partner, we, what we don't want to do is, if we're true partners, um, we have to find a way. To, to that point, so satisfy, I hear what you're saying a hundred percent. It should be all affordable. Um. And if we can define what affordability is, then we'll aim for that target, I think in this particular situation, again, because there's no land cost and. Little or no profit, there is going to be, it, it'll be easy for us to get to whatever number it needs to be. And maybe below it, so I'm not too concerned, but. I, I would ask you and the council to try and think about what we would need to give you to satisfy that. Without having to go through the whole process and design the houses and, and, and get to the point, uh, do all the studies, et cetera, only to find out. Where we can't do it.
Right.
So, that's why I'm saying look at chicken and egg.
Yeah, I a hundred percent, I, uh, understand, but if we're asking for a million or two million dollars worth of taxpayer dollars to pay for sewer, which we don't usually pay for. Building, um, that's a bit of a stretch as well, yeah, so. Um, do we know staff wise what the cost would be for a pumping station?
Um, through the. Chair of the mayor, um, I'm not sure if we've looked at that, uh. He said, I know we're undertaking E C A to. To, to increase the, uh, capacity of the lagoons. Um, but as far as for the pumping station, hopefully it's done. After research, they lost the, uh, deputy CEO director of operations, it's, it's been, um, done any work in, in the past on this.
Uh, through the, uh, through the chair, it, it looks like E V B from their class D estimate, it's only a good million dollars.
Million, okay.
Million two, isn't it?
Which is. Actually, a terrible price. So my next question, which is, it's, it's good, so, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands where, where we're at with that ask, so. Um. You said E C A, so. Do we, that was my next question, do we have the capacity? Presently, without, without E C A approval. To, to take on another seventy units. And if we don't presently, will we have, if we get? The change to this. To the lagoon station, will we, will we then have enough capacity?
That was through the, through the chair, to the mayor, um. I'll, I'll defer again to, to, thank you.
Uh, through, uh, through the chair, so as it currently stands now, we do not have the capacity to accommodate, uh, uh, seventy. Uh, development, we're averaging about, uh, seventy percent of, of, of capacity now. Uh, once you get to about eighty five percent, you're, you're gonna be required to undertake basically. The, the class A process because you're starting to reach your, uh, capacity, uh, so we. Started that process, uh, moving forward and. The goal would be adding a, uh, a full discharge, which would probably add, let's. Let, let's say an additional fifty percent capacity, we, there, there would be the ability, uh, for expansion above that, uh, uh, seventy unit.
So again, we, yeah, so again, we've done our part by making sure in advance of this, we've, we've applied for that E C A, Rob, like, so you know that. You know, we're doing, we're trying to cut the red tape.
I know, I know.
So.
And, and, and just, just. As it relates to that, um. As frustrated as Eric is getting, because this is his first real, he's been a venture capitalist his whole life and never done a real mistake, so he's frustrated. But I keep telling him, it is not the municipality, it's the province and they're, they're doing their best to navigate it and your staff has been amazing.
We certainly, and again, I'm seeming not supportive, but I think, you know, their questions, we haven't had the opportunity in an open forum or transparent forum to ask those questions. I think if we're going to do it to our citizens, we have to ask those questions and. And, and move it forward, so when it comes to the water, water's been an issue in the last term. Here in Spencerville with wells, the people are very concerned about, you know, I noticed that there's two wells drilled. On the property, three, and I noticed that they're drilled and, and obviously they're there, so you have the study on whether, whether it can, it can suit the capacity. My guess is that you're looking at some sort of a new terror system or something like that for the wells or what, or is it three communal wells or what?
Um, I. There's, it's, it's definitely a well system and I don't understand the mechanics of it, but it goes to a frequent system, so maybe that is new terror, I don't know, urban blue terror or something.
Yeah. They could do it.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay, and under, so, last two, so I noticed in the diagram that there is consideration for perks, I mean, there's lots of green space and parks. In the area, but adding seventy families or potentially seventy families to the area is a lot of people. Right, I mean, it's fantastic for small business, it's fantastic, I believe for the town, but. You know, what kind of extra space is, is, like, is our plan for that green space?
Well, we haven't built it in yet, but, um. Uh, this whole area down in here, we can't build on anyway. Um, and this area. Uh, is also owned by them and what he's talking about doing, and I don't know what the plans are, but he would, he had been talking at one point that. This whole, this was being donated, yeah, um, so, um, whether this part stays here, I, I don't. I, I, I don't know how it's gonna go, but. Uh, that is, well, this whole thing is four acres. That's probably three, and so I think if that was donated, uh. I think it's to the mill, isn't it? Is what he's talking about?
Not sure, there's.
That's the house, though. Just the house, the stone house.
Well, there's a lot of land that goes with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Straight down to the river, so it's here, it's this whole section in here.
Right, then he wants to donate to the mill?
Yeah, and, and I don't want to talk to, I don't want to talk about Oregon, because I don't know anything about.
That's not, yeah, because there's a lot of moving perks with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, with, with that, well, mine's just more green.
But I think there is, I mean, there's tons of, there's extra space there, because, because of the setback. Um, uh, here and the, um, this piece is actually a separate piece now, um, there's a lot. You know, you, you can see lot coverage is pretty dense here, but in through here, it's not, and like here, it's not, so.
Yeah.
It can often park.
So, so through this with, you know, our staff or with whoever, E V B. Um. From parking requirements to, uh, lock coverage, that sort of thing, have you met our bylaws with those, are you gonna need exemptions for?
I don't know.
With what's like that?
Well, what I, um, I don't know if they looked at the, at the bylaws at this point. Uh, I said, I asked them for the purpose of this, what would be our maximum so that when I come to you, I can say I need a, a, a pump station that'll do this amount and. Um, so I, not that far along.
So basically. Yeah, okay, so.
But I, I don't think we're gonna need exemptions.
I know, so supportive of it for sure, um. So seventy units is the number and the E V B. Uh, pump station that, that they've quoted for in there will accommodate everything that you'll have on site.
That's what they said, yes.
And that, and that cost is one point two.
That's what I think is the line.
Uh, so the sewage pumping station, uh, they estimated at a million and one, one, one point two billion for the water treatment.
Okay, all right, all right, okay. So I'm mistaken, it was a water, yeah, okay, so it's a million. And that's their high level, but I said, how accurate is that? So when I go to the meeting, uh, and he said, well, we're, we're installing them right now for other municipalities and that's where they're coming.
Okay, and you're asking for help with the pumping station of?
Um, we would love for you to participate in the water, but, uh, in talks with staff, it, that, that's likely, um. There's probably no path for that.
Right, okay.
And that's okay.
So, to staff, when it, if it goes in as a, a condo or a lease for life or whatever. It's called, what are the implications when it comes to a water system? Is it? Like I know through United Counties at, um. The Maples Project, right, they're required to manage and to do the water system there, there's a water system report, there's, you know, go through all of that. Upon completion, is that municipal or is that water turned over to, to municipal? And, and that is it our responsibility or is it, or is it the condo owner's responsibility still, or the condo, like? The company's responsibility?
Uh, through the chair, I, I don't know if we worked through all, all, all of those details yet, but if it is one. Uh, treatment system in place, it would fall under, uh, the Ontario regulation like a, a municipal small drinking water. System, so it would, it would, it would need to be, um, operated by, by certified operator, I think the intent. Uh, i- i- if my understanding is correct, that it would be something that would be transferred over to the municipality. As the, sort of the owner and operator.
Mm-hmm. If, if that was the case, would our, our, I mean, seventy more units, it's not. An outlandish number, but would our existing staff with, with, you know, Eric and, and Aaron and the group at, at our environmental services have the ability to? Take on that without further staffing or would we need further staff?
Uh, through the chair, it, it's, it's probably a little too early to, to, to fully determine that, um, but. Depending if it's similar to our, um. Existing. Systems that we have in place, I think they, I think the unknown is with respect to the, uh. Package style and plant that. That, that's being proposed, what, what the, uh, uh, population and maintenance, uh. You know, hours are with respect to that, right? Uh, versus, or use another example of the, they're very industrial park, that is a small water system. Although we're, 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 we're very minimal with respect to, 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 to the monitoring and sampling of moments, right?
Okay.
It's, it's a little early to tell.
Awesome, thank you for indulging, Chair, uh, Rob, I appreciate you coming, I, it may not sound supportive, I am for sure.
Oh, no, I get it.
I just, I think all these are resident questions and, you know, it's a big. Project for a little town and, and I think that we have to make sure. That, that, you know, when it comes to getting reports back, that all of the items that need to be addressed, you know, there, we haven't talked traffic or anything like that yet, but. There is, you know, a lot of things that need to be considered as, as we go, go forward, so.
Yeah, and, and so just so you know how far we've gone, um, we've done a, um. Uh, the hyper G is done. Uh, and we've done the species of risk, um, in, in the form of, um, E I S. Environmental impacts study. Um, so those are the real big ones and we wanted to get that knocked off first because. If, if there wasn't any, if there was no good water, then there wasn't a point in doing, or it was, if, if there was. I don't know, certain types of frogs, it wasn't gonna be, so, uh, uh, and we've determined where the, where the setback is.
Good, yeah. I think that's it, that's it for me for now.
Okay, brother, thanks.
All right, uh, councilor, so you see another question? Yes, uh, through the. C E O or chair to, uh, C O, ex deputy C O. The pumping stations we have now. How many houses do they control? Like, there's three in Spencerville, am I correct, three pumping stations?
Correct, you have the, uh, main one at, at the Drummond Building, but actually, uh. All of the current system passes through, then it goes, uh, from the Drummond Building via Forest Main to the, uh, to the lagoon.
And it can't handle anymore?
Uh, there, 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 there are some logistical issues at, uh, of, of the elevation with respect to, um. Going back across the, uh, the river, it would be more cost effective. To be installing a, a pumping station where the main pumping station would pop into that before it goes to the, to the lagoon. There's some, there's some.
There's gotta be a line comes through there now, right, because it's gotta go over to the lagoon, right, it's gotta go through the river.
Under pressure.
It's a force main.
Yeah, really, so. Would it be cheaper to add on to the pumping station one, that main pumping station or the building all new? Like just one, a small one, like we have in Adelaide Street, saying, I don't know, up here, the. Pump, pump for the main one? Still gonna be? That expensive to go on?
Uh, given. Yeah, given, given, given the, the, the current framework, yeah, you're probably, you, you are probably looking at, 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 at around that.
Really? Yeah, nice.
Okay, um, I guess I had a few, uh, points that sort of hadn't been addressed yet, I mean, I, I think. You know, we all, you know, as, as council, you know, the, 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 how can we ask the entire township to, to fund this? Becomes a difficult question, I think that you, you, you highlighted that as well, and so, you know, and it's, it's too bad, we applied for the, uh, for the, the half grant from the federal government, which we didn't get approved for this year, which is unfortunate. Because it would have been a perfect thing, I think, to help suit us into this need. Um, and I, and I don't know if the province, if we can reach out to Minister, or sorry, uh, M P Clark, uh, M P Clark, Premier, like this. The only, and I just, I worry, and I worry about how, who explains something like this to all, all the, all the township, if you call our residents, and so. You know, I don't know if it's, if they're the way to do this, I mean, you know. Doing just some off, off the cuff math, I don't know if it could be something that is funded by Spencerville Water on those units itself particularly, and maybe it's something that becomes a monthly thing for the next twenty years on a venture of some sort, but. You know, if something like that could be arranged, then, then I mean, that there's a possibility there that maybe they can. Find a way to, to help get this done, you know, but I think we have to have that conversation with staff and then figure out what options exist for us for sure. But, uh, you know, I, I, I think we all sort of, you know, we know that, uh, affordable housing is, is, is a big need, uh, in the area and, uh. You know, it's, 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 it's how do we, uh, how do we bring this on board, um, making sure that we can help out with this and making sure that all the residents are still happy with how we do it as well, so I think. We've got a pretty good plan here, obviously we're taking public opinion on it, but I, I think. You know, I just, like I said, I worry about the money, um, I worry about the risk and I worry about if we were to say, yes, sure, we'll, we'll give you a billion dollars out of the township coffers. We have, uh, three or four other subdivisions out there who are gonna ask in kind as well, and then it becomes a really. Expensive venture for us, but I think we have to have these conversations on how we can help to do this, and so. You know, but, but I appreciate you coming and talking to us, which is for sure, and presenting this to us, so, yeah, you know.
There is a way and there will be a way. We'll think outside the box, I'm not going on this, we need this, we need that, I'm like Mister Baker. I have no patience. For how this system works on us, we pulled around, pulled around on. Subdivision upon subdivision, I thank you so much, Rob, for coming. If, whatever we can do, we'll do. That's my, the way I look at it. And I'm hoping. This is, Dave, well, you would be here, well, I'm hoping.
Uh, and, and I think, I think.
Not, you know, not the one.
I don't disagree with that, all I'm saying is, there's, there's ways we have to figure out how to get this done, to help, right, so.
And, and from benefits, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, I really do, um. The, I, I, I think though, the idea of having a very affordable. Uh. That many units. Most of the time, they agree to a ten percent or a twenty percent or whatever, if you had most of them at affordable. You're still getting, your tax base is still going up and you still have. A hundred to a hundred and fifty more people. Um, at the doorstep of downtown. I think it's gonna be a fantastic scenario, so. If you were just looking at ways to sell it to the public, that's what, there's a couple of angles, um, and just one other thought, just, um, with your, um, comments, or. The, um.
Actually, I just be, when, when, you know, it, it, that's not a bad, I mean, that's a pretty good point in the fact that. It doesn't, you know, except for the maintaining of the water system itself, it doesn't seem to increase because that's gonna be a private roadway through there, it doesn't increase a lot of. Other expenses for us from infrastructure.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry, now you.
Well, if, if you don't mind, just before, just so it doesn't get lost. I think the problem, as I understand from the engineers, Dave, you can tell me, that if you were to. Your suggestion was modify the pumping station on this side of other things, the problem with that is going back underneath, running all the sweeps underneath the, uh. Uh, so the, the crate, right, so it, it's, it, what's that?
It's a river.
It's a, oh, it's a river, yeah, yes, sorry, I, yeah, spent a lot of time in Kentville, so. There is, anyway, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, that's good.
All right, well, thank you for indulging, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, say hi to your family for us.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, so that takes care of the allegation five A, so we'll continue on that with six A two. Um, which is a site plan control agreement, the Newport Drive will lead to leasing, and the C D C has some information for us on this.
Sure, you can, Chair. Um, here we have a site plan control agreement. Um. For proposed development on Newport Drive. The property is about six and a half acres, it's in our industrial park policy area and so business park industrial. Um. This site has a planned sixteen thousand five hundred square foot facility, that'll be used for the manufacturing and distribution of panels, mobile office trailers and compacted buildings. I know this committee is very familiar with this proposed development by Elentra. Um, the access is gonna be from an entranceway on Newport Drive. Now, the servicing goes by County Route Two. Um, and the building code requirement. Um and the building code requirements um tell us that there's a fire hydrant that's needed there, so we've worked with the counties, there's gonna be an emergency gated entranceway that's off of County Road Two. Um where the fire hydrant will be located there, and that was just the most economical and feasible way to um have the fire hydrant on site. Um council recently allowed a conditional building permit to be granted for the site in May, um prior to site plan approval, which allowed work to begin on the building foundation. Uh the remaining work can only proceed subject to site plan approval. The site plan control application includes a judicial investigation, stormwater management report, servicing report, and associated um engineering drawings. A site plan, fire plan, and lighting plan have also been provided with the application. Additional site plan approval was granted on May twenty nine by the C O. And as a condition of site plan approval, the owners required to enter into an agreement with the task that provided the works provided on the site plan. So a draft agreement is um in the agenda package for committee's review, um and the agreement will require council to vote.
Okay. Thank you very much, my Dave, all right. I think I'll start at the other side, if you don't wanna have anything to say just off the bat, right, I have things to say, I'll pick, fair enough. Councillor Smale?
Nothing right now, no, that's my town.
No, don't take it all, no issues, sir.
Go by today, it's coming along really, really well, so I can't wait to get it up.
Nope, nothing, and that only possible.
That was, Mr. Ray. I would echo that exactly, it's nice to see it's work progressing uh progressing forward there for sure and looking forward to seeing a sixteen thousand five hundred foot building up there, making all those panels, it's good. It's our recommendation.
Yep. Yeah, sure.
Uh to the chair, the recommendation, is that committee recommend that council enter into site line control agreement, that the land will be seen incorporated as attached?
Do you like to move that, Mr. Ray?
Sure.
Seconded, seconded by councillor Martel, okay, all in favor? All right, yes. Okay, uh moving on to six A three, twenty one oh three Dundas Street, vacant lots. All right, that's director of operations, so.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair, uh just bringing forward uh a request from the owner at the two zero nine nine Dundas Street. Uh you recall, we had just recently finished up an easement agreement on the uh west side. Uh they have inquired with the respect to the lot to the east of the of of twenty nine nine Dundas Street uh about uh the potential for either uh purchase of that lot, uh purchase of a portion of that lot. Uh they certainly are open uh with respect to uh leasing uh that area. And part of that is to allow for sort of a fenced in area where they can uh have a uh a shed for some of the outdoor equipment that probably is better suited uh in uh at the exterior versus uh in inside the current uh building. And have that fenced in with gravel, or a for for a trailer in that portion. In a brief conversation this morning with the uh with the owner of twenty ninety nine. He had said that ideally it would be a a partial purchase of that lot would be uh the best for them, so, uh actually, before we uh proceed in any sort of direction, uh uh the feeling was that we would bring it here and uh have the committee uh discuss this for her.
Yeah, this one's been bugging me for a bit, so refresh my memory, when we did the when we did the easement, thank you, when we did the easement, were we not told that there was no access available to twenty one oh three? We not offer it as an easement option and thought that it would be a better option, and now it's coming back to us that they wanna use it? So they're getting, we're kind of easing on both?
So through the, so through the chair, there is certainly uh only about five and a half feet from the from the edge of the building to the to 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 the rail tracks. Uh I I I would certainly not be um looking at it from the um use on a uh like on a regular and consistent basis going uh u- using that as the a- a- as the entrance, um one of the other, one of the other items with respect to the uh west side was that they uh the owners had already installed an overhead uh entrance with respect to that with respect to for deliveries, um et cetera, so that was one of the, one of the reasons why, at the time, they were certainly looking at um having something in place with respect to the to to the west side. I'm good for now.
Okay.
That that land's become an aggravation, it's a, I mean, it's not a park, well, it's true, it's not a park, right, get called a park. So.
It's not that land.
It's the one on the. On the left, though, by the railroad tracks, yeah, but who who owns that park, us?
The township is the uh the the owner of oddly configured lot.
So would he be interested in 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 purchase of all of it?
Uh through 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 the chair, uh the owner certainly uh expressed interest in purchasing uh the uh entire lot, uh the um caveat with respect to that part is that if we're declaring property surplus to the needs, it would need to go through the uh the surplus uh uh policy with respect to to that, and there would be no um certainly no guarantee that that the owner would be end up being successful with bid if there were multiple bids. Um I think the 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 other part of the equation with respect to that is that um if 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 declaring it, we certainly don't want to um signal that that that's a um a regular that you're, you know, going to be able to regularly access the property via that small um area, right, it's not something that you would uh that you would want, the and I'm dating back, it predates me, uh so that's that's saying a lot, uh but there were there uh on that lot, there was a barber shop uh at one point that uh that was on there and he, so, yeah.
A barber shop?
Uh there 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 was at one point, but at that time uh you 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 would predominantly just be walking to that uh to 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 access that location.
We could, but go ahead. Yeah, to the chairman, it's it's a piece of property that's not for anybody else, like I can't see someone, if if we did offer a surplus, would put it on as 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 a tent, up for tender, who would? They have, they have no, they can't even get on it.
There's another couple owners in that area.
Pardon?
Uh just there is G T Automotive may be interested, uh the Kevin that owns the Boars Nest could be interested, he owns the other built, couple buildings in that area, that gives him also access to that area. I think there were the other tenders.
Can we lease it to him, a part of it?
So through the chair, that's one 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 of the options, that is a possibility.
Then save us a lot of grief for everyone.
Anything else, Mister Deputy Ray?
Uh no, I just, I mean, I just can't see. I hope we can help with that, let's put it that way, that uh twenty twenty ninety nine, so.
Does someone have?
I have nothing at this point.
I'm really concerned about it, because as David knows there's not too many places left for the public course department, when they plow with snow in the winter, the pile of snow, and that holds a ton of snow. Like we could be paying, if we sell that property, and we have to remove the snow, we either gonna have to get a blower for the loader to be big enough to put in the dump trucks. Or you're gonna have to have every man available hauling snow off the streets. Because you've only got one other spot on Dundas Street, which is down at the old Presbyterian Church, I don't even know whether they're allowed to use it now or not. So you're not gonna know nowhere to put snow.
So just so clarification, then we can get one of our trucks down there to put snow down in that in that area?
We have done it for thirty years, I go for those trucks.
I thought we said we had five and a half feet, and I'm thinking those things are.
Oh, traveling over the river.
Oh, that's from the property line probably.
So there 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 is, there 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 is limited space
Yeah.
between the building to the rail tracks.
Any else, councillor Smale?
The wise and gentle is not to sell.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Uh my concern would be, I think it's great, I mean, they've done a lot of great work on Dundas Street, it's nice to see that building getting repurposed and being used again. Uh my concern would be the access between the five and a half feet and then the other buildings in the back, I think there may be, you know, in in future, you may need that area to help clear or help maintain other buildings in the area, I don't think that corner has been uh been looked at in a few years by the current owners, so I think, you know, and and again, with tender, if it should be tendered out, I think there would be other interests between um I know there's another homeowner there that would probably be interested in the land that uses the land currently and uses that access. I think there's another business owner that has other buildings in that area that would be very interested in it, and then G T Automotive, I think, that also show interest in it.
Interesting. So, um we have something else, Mister Ray?
Yeah, sure. Um well, one is if we declare it surplus to the needs of the township, it's because it's surplus to the needs of the township, so whoever, it's an open process, whoever bids on it, bids on it, so we don't need it. Then it should be surplus, but if you're indicating that, you know that it's for snow plowing, that, I mean, I've certainly well, not recently, but I can't climb, I can't climb hills anymore, but but certainly uh certainly utilize the uh the area. Um but how, so even if we were, even if we were to, let's say we we sold the whole parcel, twenty ninety nine was the successful bidder. How do you stop them from accessing it? I mean, the idea is that they're gonna put a shed back there, they're gonna gravel an area, and they're going to use it, how do you, how do you what, do we become policemen of how they access the the side lot, like I mean, if we go that route, how do we
So I think, yeah, I think through uh through the chair, uh no, we're not, we're in fairness, we're not gonna have somebody passing in there, what what I I think what we're really saying is that um if if we're looking at building a structure and having that as your main daily access I don't think that's really uh the best use of that property on a daily access route. So I think with 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 stipulations in the in 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 the state, it would be that there would have to be certain distances back from the rail tracks, and that we're not interfering with uh the ingredient's operation. Um certainly reached out to ingredient to 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 see if they had any uh interest as well, have not heard uh back yet with respect to that. Um it's in, i- i- it's a bit of a unique um situation, it can be left, it's got its flow. Um I'm looking for one word, the 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 request, and providing some options.
Or we can enter into a lease agreement.
Is is an option.
Anything else, Mister Ray?
I mean, there's options provided, I I don't know that I'm so prepared to make, you know, I'm I'm not, I certainly need a little more info to make a I'm not usually a little more info guy, but this one has.
Yeah. Well, I purposely didn't ask for a mover yet, because I wasn't sure, because there's five options, I wanted to see if we had any you know, be before we do anything here, do we have any kind of consensus that we're looking at, um uh councillor, just maybe you can get something else?
Yes, uh if you look at the picture, the diagram, uh through the chair to uh the seat, deputy C O. Along the railroad tracks coming up by the, I don't know what name of the street, just can't remember, by the Anglican Church. At the back of that twenty one oh three, you see a word that says Lot S concession. Is that property owned along the railroad tracks by Costco, or by or ingredient, or by us? Because it's big enough to have a driveway, but operating through there. Because according to the diagram, all the other property lines are, if you've got space there, I just wonder belongs to ingredient or Minnesota, the township.
Sorry, are you, uh a judicial clarification, you're looking at uh Dean Street, the triangle piece by Dean Street?
I'm not sure what the name of that street is, Dave.
He's, I think he's talking about the southeast corner, if you will, down there, it says Lot Five concession one.
Yeah, if you come down John Street, and then you turn, there's a street to go right beside the Anglican Church.
Yeah, uh yep, the proportion of the new street.
New Street, okay, then, you can see where the line crosses there, it comes right up in the back of that property. All the other property, one, two, three houses line, their property line stops there.
That uh that actually is, and 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 it's it's difficult to see because of the outline of the of the particular property, but that uh that that portion uh would be uh ingredient strike away from the aisle.
Oh, okay, that's all right, all right, yeah, all right, thank you very much, no more.
Councillor, tell you anything else, Ed?
No, same to that, sure, I have the same question, who have the two owns and tracks and manages tracks. I believe I would, I would leave it, councillor, Smale, stays a status quo. And Mister Mayor.
There's five options, but no recommendation.
Through the chair, that 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 is correct, at this, at at this particular stage, uh not, that's, not 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 prepared to make a recommendation, I think, uh if if I was leaning to uh anything, if you wanted to proceed in some direction, it would either be a lease or uh what I would call like some type of lot line adjustment, where there would be a portion of that lot.
Would go over to his property.
If I, can I, yeah, so um I I don't think any of these options are gonna move forward, we need to give direction to get where we need to get, we can't, and we're, I mean, I don't think he wants to probably wait until September, maybe that's what it's gonna take, but how do we need to get, where do we need to get, because we need to I mean it's an important business, he's doing fantastic work, but it looks good, and we certainly wanna see him move forward, but I think we we are, that was um that's what I'm hearing, this is, I'm just really quite sure how to proceed with that.
I I think through the chair, uh the option is if if there's uh if there's a little bit more processing time that 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 members would would like, we could always uh all look to 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 have this item locked to to next week's agenda, if there is some additional um follow up that the chair would
And I think, I think.
To 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 undertake, then that would be uh.
I mean, I I I I get the feeling from the people that, you know, a a sale is not on the in the works, um they, the scope of their work they're talking about is putting some gravel down, putting a fence down, and putting some sort of temporary movable storage on the property, is that, that's how I read that, like a a C can or a trailer or something, is that what I expected?
So through the through the chair, I would certainly uh through the conversation, it wasn't the like the C can, it was more like the uh a shed. Something, so so something of that nature, and then uh they have a uh a trailer, I I I would say that you would hold like either a, you know, a limo or or ATV style of trailer that that would be uh, you know, stored there and locked or she that fenced in area.
Okay. Uh my only concern over the potential use is, you know, uh Counselor Smale certainly indicated that, you know, and and we haven't really heard anything contrary from staff, but you know, from a snow perspective. So is there, you know, does it hinge on our ability to plow snow and move wind to that area? Right, even if we decide to leave some, a smaller piece. Does it still leave us the ability to do what we need to do to clear, you know, all the snow in the area? I mean, we clean other businesses and there is potential there for other businesses. To grow as well, so.
So and so what I was gonna see if the, going to see if the uh if the table was amenable to would be having staff look into, is there a section? That they could want that we, that would be out of our way for being to put snow there and things like that to be able to us to use as an operational thing. And and come back to us with that information, because I think we're lacking some information on what to do with this and how much. Property would they want, what that, what does that look like and what does that mean for us? Cause because it does seem like it's 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 property we use, you know, and and so it's it's and there's a need for it. The township perspective still, it sounds like, so I don't know if if there's an agreement that we could get some information like that back to us and have another. Kick at this can, but.
Yeah, I, you know, as a as a group and as a council, we've certainly been very supportive, I think of this this project. We gave up a chunk. Of another project to help with this one, I mean. Think they knew what they were getting into when they took on the building. I don't know how much drill they got to move on this one.
Well, I mean, that being the case, and I've just taken a polling, it sounds like um. Counselor Martell, you would be sort of on the remain status quo. Options, I already read that.
That would be option number one, yes, sure.
Mister Mayor, is that where you were kind of leaving?
I think that's, uh I'd like, I don't wanna burden staff with, you know, report after report after report. I certainly wanna help a business owner. If there was a way to make it happen, I'd support that, but if I had to make a choice tonight. That 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 choice would be leave it alone, but I mean, I'm also of the mind if there's a solution, I'd rather have a solution.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I. No, I like option two, take a line, lot line adjustment. Uh I mean, if if you guys wanna remain static for now, get more information, that's fine. Uh as far as putting it up for sale, that's that's a no no. So I I I would do uh two lot line adjustment or 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 going to a lease agreement.
I think very, how without the information and I would like more information status quo, but I do agree with the Deputy Mayor. Steve Dilva um that we should. So separating a portion of it or with the consultation of the other business owners and properties in the surrounding areas, I think it would be. Beneficial for us and the company question.
All right, um so I I I'm getting the feeling like we don't wanna, we don't wanna ask staff to do much more. This is what I think the consensus was from uh. Uh from, you know, most of the people in the table. So I I don't know, I mean, I think we just sort of had had the discussion, um and if there's something that uh. That that maybe they wanna come back to us with as far as a little more detail and that, maybe that's something we can entertain, but otherwise, I don't, I think I sort of favor with the rear on. Um and I believe that's what I got from uh Councillors Martell and Spinal as well, is that, you know, putting more effort into this is is. Is is money not well spent from the township perspective, so if they have something they wanna come back with for sort of more more granularity. We can always entertain that, maybe. Any any thoughts on that?
Who do you want coming back at? You want staff?
I think it would be the uh, the, you know, I mean, the the request is coming from from Spacca, right? So I mean, if they have. Some more details, they wanna give us more, you know, we draw it out or something to make it a little more obvious for us, I think, but. You know, I don't think we wanna create more effort into this ourselves, but.
Yep, uh I hate to dwell on and keep going, but if there's no restriction of them having that building type that they wanna bring into their building. Then there's still gonna be lots of room there for township to put snow there. Like, so I agree with Steve, Mister Dilva, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, we're getting closer. So then, so, cause I certainly support more information too. Like, I'm not saying I don't, I do. Um so if you wanna narrow it down to that, I could support getting more information on that option. Is that, because that's consensus now, three years, four actually, already in there. Um I. Yeah, if it's specific to how how it would work with the concerns of snow removal and. And access, right? What kind of access are we looking, looking at, right?
Does that give enough information to staff to uh take that back and take a look at it further? Do we need more conversation for you? I'll look to the W C O for now.
Well, through the uh through through the chair, it looks uh if if I'm understanding correctly, that uh. It's really a matter of looking into option two or being option five.
Was it two or five? I I thought it was more, well, maybe it was, maybe it was, maybe it was two, okay. Yep, I had the impression it was more like four and five. Or sort of the least.
No, line adjustment.
Okay, line adjustment, okay, so yeah, two and five, we're we're looking at them. To to, you know, what does option two look like? Just trying to make sure we can use the land still for our needs and uh try to accommodate this. Okay, anything else to add on this one before we move on?
One last question, Sheriff, just just a snap is there? So, I mean, it is the most irregular shaped lot in history, the. The, so when we did the easement, right, I understand why we did the easement and the garage doors on that side and that's that's fantastic. But did we decide how much space there is behind the building? And is there the ability to go behind the building still to that open lot?
Uh through the chair, I I.
And all those vents there, but.
Yeah, I um I I I would say it is uh uh very limited.
I was there. Yeah, you got a main seat there, that's it. You couldn't put a any kind of shed there.
No, but I mean, I'm just, you can't get through there, that's all on access.
So I think I I I think with respect to um. Like sort of a pedestrian walkway, yes, through that, but and like as far like as far as getting any kind of vehicle, we we just wouldn't be able to make that. Um uh term and and remain on your property.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who can answer that?
No, I just, you know, let's let's see what he needs for for uh lot size, you know, how much does he need, but. He only needs the width of. So let's uh rather go number.
All right, so hopefully that gives you guys enough information to come back to us. Uh we know when we'd be able to have this conversation again. Are we talking about next week? Are we talking about next month or?
Uh through the chair, uh I I anticipate that the owner at twenty ninety nine is. Uh you know, quite interested, so um we will follow up uh. Uh tomorrow, he can provide um the necessary details. We 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 may be able to hit the ingredient on attempt.
Okay, great, just so that we have the information, will we be able to um? You know, that certainly the concern is, or at least for me, has been, you know, where we're gonna put snow or what, what does it look like? Cause. I mean, that's what we use it for, otherwise I can't imagine why we own it, so. That that's about the only use for it from municipal perspective, maybe access to the tracks, but that's ingredient, so. Would it would it would it make some relevant sense to have comment from? From staff in relation to snow removal?
Through like through the chair, yeah, uh so uh we we most likely uh inherited the lot. So, but I think with respect to uh the comments, I will I will reconfirm. Although I did have an initial conversation with the Public Works Manager with respect to whether uh we still. Uh use that as a temporary location to store snow once we when we clean up the streets and uh. Um I'm under the understanding at this point that that's not something that we use anymore. However, I will do a double uh uh check to confirm that, but no, uh no doubt for uh. A few decades, that was one of the. Prime, prime, prime locations, uh although I I am not aware. Still u- utilizing that, but I'll do a a a double check.
If we're not, it makes that decision a lot easier.
Yep, just one last question through through the chair to the Deputy C O. Option number three was to divide it up. And offer it to to adjacent landlords. I'm assuming we haven't had any dialogue with them at all.
Uh through 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 the chair, the only um. Only preliminary conversation was like with respect to uh ingredient, but as far as the other uh locations. That the that the property would have bought, we 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 haven't went to that location. It was kind of bringing this. Forward initially, but if there is interest in, you know, like if there was interest in giving up the property, so to speak, then. You know, I think you would, you 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 would start to take those initial inquiries to see if there, uh if there is interest in what interest that would be. Premature right right now to 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 reach out to. All of them and come to find out that we we have no interest in selling it, or we have no interest in.
The information you come back with next week might give us a little more granularity of that conversation. This could be the message.
No, and and other owners in the area hasn't come forward either, like this guy, and if they wanted it, they could have. Did the same thing as uh as as its neighbors. So, I mean, if it just means to to give them a little bit of lot line adjustment, then it'd be. And like, like the mayor says, if if we're not using it, make it a lot easier.
Uh all right, I think we've had enough of this conversation. Uh moving on to six eight four, Holly Drive on Open Road Allowance and the C Deputy C O Director of Operations, this was on you, right?
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh yes, so the um. The 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 company uh one two eight seven eight seven eight zero Canada Inc. Uh in in conjunction with their Sub-Town Director of Pension. Uh want to um access their their property uh in the attached map. Uh in 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 order to do some um hydro geological uh study work. Uh the difficulty is um. They're 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 gonna need to do some uh minor adjustments, like right now, you could get a a a typical. Probably a pickup truck through, you're not going to be able to get a drilling rig uh through that um. Uh unopened road allowance as it is, but they're doing some uh some some basic limbing in a in in a few sections. As uh indicated in the uh in the photographs attached, and there are a couple of low spots that would need to have gravel added. In conversation with the um uh with the property manager. Uh that the intent was to 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 just gain access for the uh drilling rig to do the work. But not uh sort of a regular continued access at at this time, so. But you're putting forward to uh recommendations with respect to that.
Very much, um. Brody, do you want to add on this one?
Um I'm not necessarily familiar with the lot, I just kind of been able to look over this kind of.
Okay.
Counselor Spel?
I have no problem with them doing.
Okay, Counselor Rado?
I agree.
The the purple line there uh and duly chaired the the uh Operations Director. Is that, is that Holly Street, that purple?
Yes.
It is the the extension of.
Yeah, right, so the corner there when you go around, it's right there, Peterson's is fourteen, I do believe, right? Would that be?
Right in front of uh.
Yeah, I know where it is, I just want, I I cause. All all I'm saying is that's where Peters is fourteen, the last house, I guess. Just so I, yeah, there's no gate.
I I think you're in that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you can't even, I could hardly walk up there, so I can understand why. I I have no issues at all for them to get. To get up in there and uh do the work, especially if they're interested in doing some test holes or test wells. So that sounds like uh de- development, development is, woo hoo.
More houses, more houses, more houses, um yeah, hydro G, which certainly, you know. Yeah, no, no, I agree, um so, okay, so help me up, so unopened road allowance, non-maintained road. No implication, if we allow them to go in and do the work they're doing, it doesn't somehow magically become maintained road or anything like that.
That is, that 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 is correct, that that our uh unopened road allowance policy typically would indicate that we would not. Uh consider like opening up to the the road allowance. But as far as the use of an uh unmaintained uh road allowance, it typically uh would enter into an agreement. Uh with the with the municipality. Which is. A fairly formal uh agreement that that. And and that really works out in in cases where um you're going to be using it on a on on more regular basis. But uh given that it's just a one-off, I think, a a reduced um. Agreement that just sort of indicates that, uh you know, there, you know, but the municipality is not liable in any relationship or form. And that uh the condition of the the area is not in for better condition than. What it what it currently, what it currently is. Typically, there would be the requirement that additional signage and to take out some uh. Additional liability, uh but I think with 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 respect to just uh for the accessing of the drilling machine. That the uh that contractor has that liability and. I think it's stuck with uh with with respect on that uh road that they're they're responsible.
All their responsibility, and and they're the owner of the entire parcel that's there.
Uh the, but but yes, my beautiful uh.
The red line.
Red line drawing. Yes, purple is the the uh unopened uh roads and then the green dash area. Is is sort of the area that needs access to do some 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 of the uh uh test drilling, which is uh possibly uh. Sort of a culvert or a a crane, a craker screen, that's that that's there.
Interesting, okay, yep.
We can access portions of the what the uh limited uh access, but they can't do, they 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 can't get into. Full testing on that property.
I believe that. Yeah, just to help the Deputy C O, I was involved in a case of a road allowance. Ten year, not even ten years ago, and we were informed by the, we went to court over it. And if the road is not graded, it's a non-maintained road. In any part or any road in Ontario, province of Ontario. So let me, their township isn't viable for it, if they just fill out a pot holder zone, as long as we don't run a grader down there. It's non-maintained.
You never get a grader down there?
Just lets you know, that's all.
Okay, and that shake anything rotational wise? Okay, one thing I wasn't sure of, uh Mister Deputy C O, was uh there's no time. There've been no timeframe on here, is there, would there be one on the agreement where we'd be like for one year or two years or would that work?
Uh through through the uh through the chair, uh yes, we would probably, we would probably look at even learning up. Probably like a three to 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 six months, depending, I I you know, I I would anticipate that they would want to uh. Get in uh and and get that work done, so I I would wanna see it extend much more than six months uh maximum.
And and then I'd be, now that you've clarified what that green areas or the area they wanna do the testing in. I guess, you know, hey, whatever they wanna do, but I wasn't sure why they wouldn't have just come off sudden drive, that'd be a shorter distance for them, I would think for them to have to do, but anyways.
Um through the chair, I I can't. Fully speak on that, uh I I have not been uh on the uh unopened uh road portion. Fully speak on that. I, I have not been on the unopened road portion. On Sutton Drive, I'm not sure which one provides better access. I'm anticipating that they, they must have determined that the whole drive extension provided.
By far. Yeah, so.
That would, that, that, that would be. The best answer.
Does anybody have any? It looks pretty wet.
They joined each other. A long drive way down into their.
Whoever's property is. Okay, any other questions, comments, anybody?
I just like know without signs, as if we can't see on the picture.
We.
Coming out of there, literally.
We have a recommendation, the committee recommends and council grant permission to one, two, eight, seven, eight, seven, eight, oh. And an Indian subcontractor pension to make minor improvements to the Holly Drive unopened road allowance. And to allow drilling equipment across our access to undertake a hydro geological study. Do I have a move or not? Move by the there and do I have a secondment seconded by Counselor's bail? Okay, all in favor? Okay, good, all right. Excellent. Okay, so we'll move on to six, eight, five, which is recreational vehicle temporary use. All right, also a recommendation at second.
Actually, I don't think there is a recommendation.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, so we will, 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 the C O and. So, sorry, Deputy C O Director of Operations, forget figuring out this title. You want to introduce us to this and just walk us through a little bit?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, I, I would probably recommend that committee and council just utilize driver operations. Isn't, or, or mitigates any type of. Confusion in that regard. So, the residents at twenty-four Frederick Street have been displaced due to a garage fire. That occurred in their property a couple of weeks ago. They are requesting that they able to put a trailer on their family's property at Three Tunnel Point in Johnstown. Approximately five kilometers away from the damage. They've indicated that they anticipate redisplaced for up to six months. Our current zoning bylaw twenty, twenty-two thirty-seven does allow for. Recreational vehicle to be on the same lot where. Only being constructed or if there is a future construction or renovation. It does not permit a recreation vehicle on. On another lot as it is right now, that would require a. Zoning bylaw amendment for temporary use for the recreation vehicle at a different, at a different location. Obviously, given the circumstances, I think it would be. Fair in, in that regard to, to, to waive what that zoning bylaw amendment P one B. And to proceed, you know, as soon as possible. Through the, the process to, to give that zoning bylaw amendment forward and anticipate. Being passed, however, there may be, there may be opposition in, in, in that regard. I know that Tuttle Point has been somewhat of a sensitive area with, with respect to recreational vehicles passed. So, I think really it's. It, it's permitted now on the same lot. If, if, if they choose to go that direction, they certainly indicated safety concerns with respect to. Their children being on site where, where major renovations are occurring. Can certainly appreciate that, but also appreciate the, the, the process and, and structure that's in place. With, with respect to the policy, so this is. This is the best option, I think.
And, and just to make sure everybody's clear, so would there be, we'd have to be rezoning this temporarily, is that what we'd be doing? Or is it just, it'd have a public meeting and everything else about that, or it'd just be? That's, would there have to be all of that?
I, I, I can certainly, maybe have the community development coordinator explain. She can probably explain it just a little bit better than I can.
Would require a zoning bylaw amendment, it could be a temporary zoning bylaw amendment. Recently did, would be some re-rot, it can't be more than three years and could be extended. But I think in this case, they don't need it for three years, so it could be for a lesser amount of time, council would have to spend the time.
So this is the recommendation is more about the fees, obviously, it even says that it's about the fees. So we have the fees for the zoning bylaw amendment, I'm sure we'll step that conversation.
But we don't have to have a public meeting to do that amendment.
It does, right, where, a, a public meeting, just like we did for a reroute, they have to make the application, we have to give notice, there has to be at least twenty days' notice. A public meeting, and then there is a seal period after. Sorry, twenty days was a public meeting, and then we, we need to make a decision for a recommendation at the public meeting, and then council needs to make a decision. After that.
So, right now, we, we don't have a bylaw duly chaired. That, if we're building a home, on that property, we can put a trailer. But in this case, they have a fire, and they're moving their trailer to another resident, and we have to go through all that, a bylaw? There's nothing to go around it.
Yeah, I, I think.
Like a public meeting?
Through the, yeah, well, through the chair, yes, like that.
He loses the whole month.
It, it, it could, it, it, it could, it, it could, it, it could be, you know, two months. Leading into two and a half, three months. With respect to that.
And, and there is no, sorry, I guess, so there is no other opportunity, it sounds like.
Not current, and not, not through the current framework that we, that, that, that we got.
Oh, my God. I think what we're saying is, is there an inside of the box thing, is there, first applied right now, but I don't think we have that.
Well, the, 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 the only, the only inside of the box one is, is a trump card. That's not following process and policy.
Okay, so.
So he, uh, duly chaired, let me get this straight, please. So he wants to put the trailer down on Tuttle Point, on, I guess it'd be. Some, his father's house, right, or is it across? It says three tunnel points, so is that on the riverside or is that on?
I live right behind the house, just coincidentally. His parents live right beside him, her, her parents that live right beside him.
On Frederick, I mean. No, no, I'm talking about where we're putting the trailer.
So it would be on the south side.
Okay, so it'll be on, on the house side, okay, I got that straight. So, for him, a, a son to put a trailer on. We have to go through. To make. And he only wants to be there until, till, till October, we may not get this done till October. Doesn't make sense. Some, something's wrong.
So if we, we don't have to tell, like, because we do have to tell you to go forth and give a twenty day notice, essentially.
Yeah, we have to give them.
Twenty days from now, we can have that. We can have a public meeting, twenty days about this. And then there's, after we have that meeting, you know, even if we had, and I don't know what the timing line would, it looks like. A council meeting right after that, we'd have to have a council meeting to have that. And then there's a, there's a period where we have possible feedback from, you know, right, you know, objections, if you will. And that's another twenty days, so we're talking forty two days from today, minimum.
Can't see him living in a trailer in January, but he may have to.
We would obviously try to make the timelines as short as possible, but we can't go past a planning act. Time to know that there's an application and how they can contribute with that.
Through the chair, please, just one second, then, Mr. Deputy, Mr. Rizard.
Okay, so being creative and thinking back to what we did with the site plan for Alontra. To allow Alontra to start building before we approved. Site plans. Why can't we do the same thing?
The chair, the site, site control process is like, that's a voluntary process that. The township goes through, it complied with the zoning bylaw. So we were issuing a document before the site plan was approved, but the site plan still comply with the zoning bylaw. In this case, what they're proposing does comply with this.
Well, I have no choice, we don't, I mean, we, we want to get to moving as soon as we can, obviously, right? So we have a. We have a, we have a secondary, Counselor's bail, you had to comment.
I just want, is there no possible way that we could add something like an emergency situation?
You still have to go through the process to be able to add the emergency part to the process.
So we have no choice.
The choice we have today is to start this process now, as opposed to.
But he has the option to put the trailer on his own property while they're building a house, he just doesn't want it because of the children, correct?
Yeah, it's a lot of, I, I've been.
I agree with him, yeah. I guess we're going to.
Counselor, sorry.
But through the chair, as someone who actually experienced a house fire and had to live in a trailer in his backyard during construction with. Children in the house, it's, you know, it's doable. I, I'm fully willing to support this, but we're gonna have to keep in mind public points, it, it could get very sensitive.
Oh, it will.
And I, if.
It will get sensitive, that's why I said.
Have we done this before, like, there's been lots of, I'm assuming there's been, I'm not the only guy in the township to. Lived in a trailer in his backyard, watching his burnt house being demolished, and his new house going up. Parents can be responsible for kids to keep them away from, I'm not trying to be the, you know, the hard ass or anything, but.
I think it's dealing with the request as the request is.
Yep, so.
And the request is to look at a different law.
So, I mean, on this recommendation though, which, which we have in front of us, and it's the only thing we can do, I, tonight anyways. We don't move in a secondary, the committee recommends that council waive the twenty-five hundred dollar fee. For a zoning bylaw amendment at Three Turtle Tuttle Point, should residents proceed in this direction. So, I know. Okay, so. Any other quick comments on this, anybody? Okay, all in favor? All right, yeah, so we, we have that, so in twenty days, I guess twenty-one days would be. A Monday, which we have maybe a meeting, I think, a council meeting.
Through the chair, we're forced to receive an application.
Okay, so. Bring it before us, obviously, but I'm pretty sure we'd be willing to maybe have a, a special committee meeting after that. To try to get a truly chair, it's more than welcome, I mean, the, the downs that, yeah, with that chair. Okay, great, all right, so then we've completed that one. Moving on to then six B, Work and Economic Development, application for community improvement program funding. Six twenty-three County Road, also known as the Rustic Spoon. In the development quarter, you have this one.
Um, so through the chair, the Rustic Spoon Restaurant opened in November twenty-three at the Carrot Hall at six twenty-three, number two. The restaurant's owner has submitted an application for funding under the property's sod improvement program of the township's community improvement plan. Uh, the application was initially received by the program administrator on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. With additional information that was provided just recently on May thirtieth. The project worked began in October twenty twenty-three and was completed in November twenty twenty-three. Uh, the general eligibility requirements of the C I P require that for any incentive program contained within the credit committee group plan. A financial incentive program application form must be submitted to the township. Accepted process by the plan administrator prior to commencing any community improvement works. Um, that's in section six point six. Um, so the applicant has been advised that the application does not meet the general eligibility requirements for this C I P's financial incentive program. Staff will have to present the application to the committee for consideration, so I'm putting an application with details. Attached to the staff report and a summary within the report for committee to review.
Uh, all right, so, and. Right, so there is the recommendation, that's what, discussion, okay. Um, I'll open it up then, Mr. Mayor, you want?
Yeah, um, so. So we don't do retro applications, that's, that's basically the, the reason for no recommendation, no support.
Uh, correct, it, um, the C I P says that if the applications proceed, then it's, the work has already been started. Then we don't proceed anymore, we reject the application.
Okay, um, and I have one other question, and it's to do with the application. And I, I'm sure that this was no part of why it wasn't received in time, but on page four seventy-five of four eighty-four. Page ten of twelve. It's please contact Deborah McKinstry Township Clerk, planning administrator, write down to her phone numbers and her emails.
Uh, through the chair, the application form is actually part of the community improvement plan. We have an online version of it. Um, also, I understand the link wasn't working properly for the applicant when. They went to apply for the community improvement. I don't believe that was the reason that it was.
I, I, can I go one more time? So, in, in having talked with, with Chad, certainly went over and, and made ourselves known. To them, when a new business comes to town, you see them doing a considerable amount of work. They just, you know, they put a ton of work into it, their parking lot's full, they're doing a fantastic job there. And I, I just struggle to think that one of the very few businesses that could actually qualify for C I P. Uh, he was excited, he moved into the township, I can't speak on his behalf, but he began work as quickly as he could and started. Started as fast as he could, and to think that he's, you know, putting that investment into our town and. By putting that investment in quickly and trying to get started in, in a very competitive business. Quickly, that he now. You know, has, has disqualified him, I just, I struggle with that a lot. That's all.
You struggle.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I feel like you have something.
You're gonna struggle more.
How in earth this doesn't qual- qualify though? I don't, like, we, we went to him and said, hey, you know, you put up a new sign. And get this, nah, you qualify, you know, we have a grant for you. And now. He fills all this out, he gives us all his bills, which is pretty hefty. So, and we tell him that's not covered.
Right, we, we went, we went to him, sorry. So we went, we went to him, who's we?
Biden, oh, and said, hey, you can do this, you make some improvements, some money there for you.
I did this, that's my, I just misunderstood.
And, and I don't, so where, where does it say that he doesn't qualify under this?
Through the chair, it's section six point six point one.
Six point, six point one.
Okay, six, I don't know.
One of the staff report, I referenced the section of the code book, and, and then it also. Um, decides in section six point seven in the general process that it's a substantial requirement. I've referenced that on page two of my report.
So is there any way we can change this? As a council?
I guess.
It's tricky, right?
I don't know.
We have to change the bylaw, we have to change the C I P.
The plan is a planning act process, and I think we've got the long takes of changing too. Already. Um, through the chair, we've had components ask for a similar. The, the, I, ask for. Um, to apply for work that's already been done before, and we followed the community improvement process and their applications were eligible, so. It's difficult to process this one or go further with this one.
Well, and it sets precedence, right, that, you know, we could have a lot more of these, especially the ones that we've already said no to once before, to come back, right? Well, and it sets precedence, right, that, you know, we could have a lot more of these, especially the ones that we've already said no to once before, to come back, right? That's just a cautionary tale.
So, yeah, Mr. Sam, through the chair, uh, to Wendy. So there's a certain time you can put in for it, or you, like, like, he didn't get the work done until whatever, so that he's past date, you can't put in for it at all, not even the next year.
Yes, through the chair, you have to apply for, similar to, and you have a grant, you need to apply for it before the work is, is.
Okay, that's fine, I agree with that, but he's showing you bills and everything. So if you apply for it before you do the, you don't know what your money's gonna, how much, how, how do you know how much to apply for?
Let's have.
Yeah, the usual process requires you to submit your votes.
Or you give quotes, okay, all right. Okay.
And somewhere, Tom?
You know, the, I, I really appreciate the, the work that they, they brought, the community and the investment, but we've got requirements and guidelines and a process, and if we don't follow the process on this one, if we, we can't cherry pick the ones that we wanna retroactively, it just opens up a huge can of worms, as you said, you know? How many businesses in, in our township have give repairs over the last year, then, well, maybe we can apply now too, it's already done. I, I, if we're gonna change the rule, we're gonna bend the rule, we need to change the rule. And you can play a hockey game where the wingers get called for outside and the center doesn't, the rules apply for everybody, it's, it's unfortunate, but can't support this. Just too early, but that's.
Um, I mean, there is processes and policies and procedures in place, and I, I do believe in process, policy and procedure, so unfortunately, I would not recommend. I do think they're doing an amazing thing, that it does look great over there, but unfortunately. Yeah, no, and, and it does, I mean, they've done a great job there. I mean, I was going through some of the bills, I mean, uh, getting, getting past the first part of this being submitted after it was done. Some of the bills and numbers don't make sense, I mean, we're not, we're not, we wouldn't fund the internal stuff anyways, and some of these were definitely internal work, like plumbing and things like that, so it was, it wasn't even clear to me exactly what portion of all those numbers are there, but, um, yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's fair, I mean, and, and I'm not supposed to really talk, which I just noticed that as well, something else to be, to be talked about, is that, you know, are these bills making sense as well on top of that? Uh, Mr. Mayor, you have something?
I have two, two, two things, cause I, I think I, ultimately, I think, even though this, I get that we have a process, it certainly is, you know, I'm a small business owner as well. Oftentimes, especially when you're new to the community, I was new to a community when I, when I built my business. I, I did have to go through the planning process to, you know, there were changes, and it was, it was long, it was lengthy. Um, but sometimes I think when you're so involved in starting up your business, you're so nervous, you're working, you know, eighteen-hour days trying to get your business open and started, sometimes you miss out an opportunity, and, and if anything, this outlines, you know, maybe a flaw in, in what we have for a process. Where, you know, like, if, if this was an application that was coming in today, and we don't have other meetings where we could deal with this, this could be months before it ultimately got dealt with, and I think as a business owner, you'd wanna dealt with in, in a very timely fashion, and I'm not saying you don't deal with things timely, you do. But I, I mean, I wanna find ways to support small businesses, you know, especially, it's, it's a hard time to be a small business owner, especially in the restaurant, uh, industry, we uh, have so few, you know, small businesses in, in the township to see a new one that's open and doing so well, I certainly wanna support them, I mean, that's what C I P is for, and I get that, you know, from a process, it says that, that we can't, but I don't know, I struggle with that a little bit, so, um, and like, what you're saying, if it's broken, fix it, right, so. But I, I don't know what to say, but I certainly support, I would support it, so, um, I also support fixing it. Uh, so that in the future, you know, if there's other work that's, that's done and, and it somehow qualifies for other work, then maybe it qualifies for for that then. But I, I do think that that, it, it recognizes a flaw in in that, in that process, and, and maybe we need to consider that.
Yeah, and I, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, uh, C D C, that we've talked about once, we sort of have the strategic plan and everything figured out, uh, do you remember we come back and review this yet, will we not? I think we talked about that at some point.
Area, yeah, I don't know. It was how or what?
Through the chair. Last year, I believe there was a request to look at our community improvement plan this year, so. I'd like to find some more hours in the day.
So, um, yeah, I mean, we have a recommendation here. Uh, does anybody else have anything else they would like to add before we call it to end? I just like the major statement. Oh, there is no recommendation, though.
There is, yeah, there is no recommendations, uh, it's just a discussion at this point, but, and was the atmosphere, council mail, sorry?
I, like, I'm just sort of concerned about, cause like, I feel sorry for the guy, he's put so much money in, he come into our, our village and, uh, to go to us, with you. Uh, I don't think we got eleven hundred people in the car. And there's been four living in Spencel, and they got more business than we do at Carroll. The car was drying up to a ghost town. And I've been talking to this fellow, and he's wanting to build a small variety store, a grocery store. So, to discourage him by not helping with this, but there's no more business being added. I mean, I don't know the man personally, I just go on by what I, I met him one day. But for anybody that has a business, like, the mayor said, he has a small business, you gotta get a break once in a while, you, you're gonna lose them, so. That's for anything we can do to help anybody.
Ask a question, Stan?
Sure.
Is there, and, and, and I think it's been outlined, that there are parts of this that wouldn't have qualified, so let's say that it was on time, is there, is there parts of it that would qualify? Do we know what the dollar value is that he would have qualified for, had it have been submitted on time?
Through the chair, the maximum amount that property is solid proven, it's, it really, it's fifty percent of the, a little budget estimate of five thousand dollars. Um, there's likely ten thousand dollars worth of this off present.
So it likely would have qualified four of the five K, had you submitted it?
Correct, the outdoor signage fixed to the building would qualify, the work to the patio would, um, qualify, the signage lights would qualify, um, everything traps probably part of the patio, I mean, and I probably wouldn't have said the painting supplies, but painting as a, um, I was something, yeah, yeah, I would have been lost.
So what if it's still qualified then?
So I included in section four with the, so.
So there is no recommendation unless somebody wants to put one out there?
So we, we're not voting on this yes or no, where we can, we're discussing it, can this come, it's a discussion item. Can it come back again, if, if somebody wants to bring it back for further consideration?
Through the chair, if you still wish you'd been.
Like, like, for me, I don't know that I wanna make a decision on this one tonight, I wanna reflect, I know that Councilor Martell said, I've given the floodgates open for everybody, it just, there's a little bit more information, I think, that I, I'd like to, uh, pursue with staff, and for me, I, I'd like to see it again. Without saying no yet, and I don't mind saying no if I get the information that I, you know.
Yeah, okay, um, so, uh, this is our last C D C meeting of summer, and we, right, we're coming back in September after this, but we've got to bring each other.
Well, it's already done.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Um, okay, so why don't we get that information, and maybe at the same time, uh, uh, you know, one of the things that I think we probably would also like to ask is when we wanna start having that discussion on what the C I P looks like, and, and, you know, and see if we can.
A lot of things.
When you're, find that next minute, if you could, if you could do that. Yeah, anyways, we'll see how that works out, obviously, but I think we should, you know, we've had this discussion, we've had a number of discussions about the C I P and things we'd like to see a little differently, and so, we should, in some way, kick this conversation.
When was the last time, Deputy Chair, to, uh, to Wendy, when was the last time that, uh, we had a business apply for this grant?
Uh, through the chair, earlier this year.
Earlier this year? And who was that?
That's the whole. C P R.
Oh, yes.
I guess, yeah, one, one more, I'm gonna follow in his, his line. What's the question, what's the, I promise, what the, what's the total value for C I P that we have in budget?
Uh, thirty thousand dollars.
So it's thirty thousand, out of that thirty thousand, how much have we used? Just pesca?
Um, five thousand dollars, yeah.
Okay, so there's twenty-five thousand budgeted dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay.
How much for the last two years? Like, this year, last year?
Through the chair, those report, that was to committee that had each year outlined, I don't know the number off, off my head.
Oh, it was, it was, it was dropping over years, I remember the. Yeah, it was sort of trying to go down, right?
So, so we turned it down. But if you utilize only five thousand of that, the next question, Jerry, you top up the five thousand to make it.
That's right, it doesn't grow. Stops at thirty no matter what, yeah.
Okay, uh, so, uh, I think we've got a little bit of directions, you guys, I think we've had a discussion about this, so I think we can move on. Can we go with that? Uh, moving on to six, oh, C.
Actually, Chair, if I may, um, I believe the C D C looking at the work clerk, I was wondering as to when it's gonna be deferred, so.
Oh, okay.
Are we going to have a motion to defer to the next C D C meeting, which will be in September? I can't remember the date.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah. I'll, I'll move, I'll move a motion to defer it until, so, till the.
We've motioned to defer until the next C D C? We did a motion.
Second, sorry.
Yes.
Apologies, also through the chair, is this, the same report that you'd like on the September?
Yeah, I think the, the mayor would like to, uh, get some information as well, so is there information you wanna get in here as well?
Yeah, um, there was a refer. There was a reference to deny, um, denied businesses. Um, if, I know we can't, like, they're walking the line, I don't like to walk on.
Through the chair, um, they would be, like, if someone made an inquiry and asked for whether or not it would be an eligible project, you would answer, no, I don't know a specific business, I mean, I can look back, you know, that's what you're looking for, but like, I, um, there's, I would be missing some, I'm sure.
Right, uh, uh, would, which, I, I just, the inference was that we had, and again, I, I'm good. Yeah, I'm good.
So, so we'll talk later to get it, September, uh, potentially, we get.
One more before we go on this place.
Sure.
It says here, the project eligibility, I know, staff were asked to present the application to the committee for consideration. Was it the owner that asked to have this consideration, or was it staff to bring forward to us? It says here, staffers was asked to present the application to the committee for consideration.
Mr. Chair, uh, I asked for it, you brought it.
Are you there? Okay, thank you. Thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, um, okay, so, um, that's, I think that's closed that conversation about clearing against Denver, moving on to six C, uh, which is play recreation, the summer programming update, what's that? Was there anything to vote on then?
Oh, the, vote on the motion, I think it's voted on the motion.
To defer, okay. Right, I mean, there were no actual motions, whatever that, so, on the second there, by council's mail, uh, all in favor? All right. Okay, uh, so then we'll move on to six C, play recreation, summer programming updates, and the recorders is, uh, is off today, so, uh, and the community development coordinator is gonna act on her behalf, so, Wendy? Yeah.
On behalf of my right to be coordinator, um, so, we've got Kids Inflatable Day, it's scheduled for Saturday, June eighth, the township in partnership with Tribeca Inflatables, it's gonna be hosting a free kids inflatable day at the ingredients, so they're from nine to twelve, I know this has been shared on social media already, so please help in, in sharing this and spreading the word. Um, the water park canteen, it's gonna be opening on Monday, June seventeenth, with reduced hours until, uh, June twenty-eighth, and then it will, um, start the regular hours for the summers due to, um, the availability of the summer, so. Senior exercise class, um, that's run by C P H C at Johnstown Community Center, has ended for the summer. Uh, recreation department is planning boredom buster day trips, they're gonna be taking four children on two trips to Mount Cascada Water Park on Wednesday, July seventeenth, and Wednesday, August fourteenth. Um, leaving from Johnstown, registration is now available online. We have swim teams practicing Johnstown will be Monday to Friday from four thirty till five thirty, and from twelve to one in Cardinal. Registration for both are now available online. And a pool party in Cardinal this summer, the recreation side, we're hosting the Cardinal Pool Party on Saturday, June twenty-second. Uh, from twelve till three, families can register for swimming lessons or the board and buster day trips. Um, there's gonna be a barbecue with hot dogs and freezies, public swimming will be there, and there'll be some games. Um, and, uh, Sarah's gonna also be hosting the opening of the Johnstown Pool, um, party on Sunday, June twenty-third. Uh, the return of the Junior Life Guard Club for the summer, it's just gonna be at the Johnstown Pool on Mondays and Wednesdays from twelve to one o'clock. Uh, registration will be available online, some more information comes to you.
Great. Any questions ever? Uh, let's, let's, it, Mr. Phil, I guess, so.
Um, through the chair, to, uh, the deputy C A O. I belong to Sierra, and there's.
Sierra.
What I've asked, uh, asking is, I have a friend that owns a factory, so I asked, I'm going to ask him if he would donate to the, uh, barbecue for the food, but then I spoke to Greg Mulder, or.
Mulder.
Mulder, and, uh, they don't give receipts out for taxes, so he said I had to come and ask you, but I don't know whether you would be doing it or not. Like, for the company to write off, honestly, taxes, if we give three hundred dollars or whatever. So I don't wanna go about getting out of line or not.
But, I think, yeah, I think, uh, through the, the, through, through the chair, I think we'll just have to put more information, which I, the editing.
Yeah, cause it's a nonprofit organization, and they don't give out receipts, so, or, or we follow for taxes, so.
Through the chair, to Councilor's Mail, in the past, in those situations where a donation flows through the township, how we have the ability to issue it.
Pardon, sorry to hear you.
All right, in a case where, uh, donations flows through the township to another uh, nonprofit organization, we have the ability to issue a tax.
So I could, uh.
But we would need more information.
So, okay, what kind of information from me?
Yeah, it sounds like.
Okay, send C A O some information, an email, and.
Okay.
All right, okay. Anybody have anything else, comments, what's?
Which no, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, um, uh, I know, well, you've, I've been promoting the heck out of the, the June eighth for the Tribeca Inflatables Day, and, and I think you guys will have a blast, uh, doing that. Um, looking forward to seeing the, the canteen open, um, and, and the pools open, do we, are we, are we staffed up, are we, you know, the?
Through the chair, um, our staffing for both pool and camp is looking really good. Um, so we are staffed a lot, and our summer camp registration has two hundred and seventy-nine and three hundred and twenty spots filled up.
So, fifty to go. That's good, that's fantastic, okay, and so from a lifeguard perspective, we're staffed up and we're good to go, we're covered well at both pools.
Yeah.
Good, and, um, I noticed when we were, uh, in the Johnstown area, the waters in the pool, um, I don't know if the heaters are on yet, but, uh, um, no issues with getting them started up and everything's good and ready for them? It's not here.
Through, through the chair, and I think, through the mayor, I think in the, in the report, uh, as council, uh, they did mention that we're on track for having inspections done, also inspections, so. So they're helping me a lot. So many. A lot of people.
No issues, though, no issues, so. Thank you.
All right. Um, Mr. Deputy, are you ready? You're good?
Just my, the, sorry, we talked about the, they, you know, the board of muster trips usually are, are pretty much full in advance as well, are they? Do we know yet, or do people hold on, I know a lot of times they hold off till, till, they get the numbers up.
Through the chair, I don't know what the numbers are right now, um, but I do know that they expect people to be signing up also at those pool parties and the team registration here as well, so they probably don't expect people by, um, by them, but it'll just be Mount Cascada this year, before they've done one day at Mount Cascada, one day at Glitso, but they found that, uh, the kids were enjoying Mount Cascada, or there was just more things that the kids could do, um, there.
Good. Great, awesome, thanks, thanks.
That's great. And I wasn't gonna say some of those things, I think, to the mayor. And I wasn't gonna say some of those things, I think, to the mayor. Um, yeah, if there's anything we can do, obviously, I mean, I did see the boredom buster days were out there, I was sort of focused on getting inflatables day full. You will there, um, and, uh, but yeah, I was gonna start pushing that as well, I'm glad they're, they're, they're really mad, I mean. I think all of these things are showing what, what a great job staff is really doing on getting events out there for people, which is excellent and, uh. And the pool party as well, I just think there's a lot of stuff happening around the town, around the township and, uh. And, uh, we, we think as council, we really appreciate all the things that are going on, so. Alright, uh, anything else, anybody have got on this one? Nope, okay, alright, moving on to number seven, inquiries and notices and motion, does anybody have it? Counselor Martell?
I would like to suggest that at our September C D C meeting, we include a discussion. Item regarding the possible creation of a short-term ad hoc communications committee. To explore options on modernizing how we reach out to the community. And we've talked about, uh. A recurring theme here is how do we get that message out, and we've talked about it for a couple of years, we have some good ideas come out, electronic billboards. Public service videos and I, you know, I think it's time to move on then. And the C D C coordinator apparently has a lot of times.
Okay, that's good. I'd like to, I'd like to see that as well, I don't think I wanna see that in September, I'd like to see it as soon as we could, but, uh, I don't know if we can have that discussion earlier than that, but. What's that, we don't know if I need, I've limited, limited schedule over the summer, but, uh. Um, if we could, uh, put that on. If we wanna rush it, do we want it on September?
I'd find in September, case makes ways.
Perfect, if we can put that on the September agenda, that'd be great. I think it's, it's in favor. So I guess, um, okay, anybody have anything else, Counselors, no? No, here, Deputy Mayor? No, for me. Uh, okay, that's good, I'm good too, then, that's excellent, moving on to number eight, then, question period. Does anybody, I mean, we have some people who are patiently here for me, it's very, very, thank you for staying this long.
Our, all the right here, I mean.
Okay, great, and. Other company where we do, uh, the way, donations, we like the, rateable, right? That, that would, I believe, that would be through, uh, through the township office, come to the office, basically, reach out to the clerk, to reach the treasurer, treasurer, so. Treasurer and C I O, uh, who's the best person to reach out to on that one, and the contact information on the website, if you go to. It'll be all there for you. And hopefully it's updated with our new scroll, right? Take a note, okay, perfect, okay, okay, uh, moving on to number nine, closed session, there is no closed session today, so then. Moving on to number ten, we have a need a motion for adjournment, a non-niable motion for adjournment, I have a move for.
There won't be a need of.
Yeah, I know. By Counselor Smale, seconded by, um, sorry, Counselor Martell, all in favor? So, that's okay, moving on, thank you.
I'll stop, I'm gonna go crazy.
Alright, you know. I don't think, I don't know if there's something or no one else. You know what, and if Rudy.